Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, March 20th. It's now 7:07 PM. Town Council, meeting in the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John, will you lead us in prayer?
Our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come together this evening as your devoted stewards, determined to lead and mindful of our purpose. Guide our hearts and our minds and the decisions that we make and all matters that come before us. Bless this meeting with your divine presence. Guide our actions as this council works to serve the best interests of the good people of the town of West Warwick. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilman Bajula?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Under section forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five, eight, four, seven of Rhode Island general laws, the council will close executive session that was pertaining to interest arbitrations for wager openers for fire and police unions under prevailing collective bargaining agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That date was for March 20th.
Tree City USA presentation?
Jack? Unfortunately JT from Tree City wasn't able to make it to the... TJ, I'm sorry.
TJ.
So, if you want to come on up, yeah, a couple of our guys, they have another...
Hey Ronnie, long time no see.
Right now, huh? I'm gonna read this. You guys hold that. Anybody want to be a photographer like Jack calls?
I can do it.
He's gonna hold the banner up. Aim it to the crowd. Sixteen years.
Consecutive years, right?
Sixteen consecutive years. Resolved that the town council of the town of West Warwick proudly joins the West Warwick J.C.'s of Kent County in celebrating their sixteenth annual Tree City USA, which augments its townwide commitment to Earth Day, Arbor Day, and our neighborhood partnerships through the national recertification as Tree City USA community. And further, my hearty congratulations are extended to the J.C.'s for their outstanding and continuous project management of public service at their award-winning J.C. corridor and their advocacy for the rehabilitation of the Senator Rock Riverwalk, all of which has become a statewide attraction for horticulture excellence over the past decade. In dedication to many endeavors, the West Warwick Town Council is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude, and congratulations to the West Warwick J.C.'s for their commitment and dedication to the town of West Warwick. Congratulations. Town, one more. We'll let everybody squeeze in. Angelo, you gotta do one more, right?
Jack, you can't use that for a bedspread this year.
It's a mugshot.
Good job, guys. Oh, Jackie.
Yeah, Jack, let me do it for you.
There you go. Cecil, be in the middle.
You can get in the picture now. Jack, you gotta move over a little bit next to Dave.
Hey Jason. Why don't you end up on the chair?
I know some people in the crowd were afraid for me to fall.
Jack, his, uh... The stickers for the sign down in the... The reflective stickers, all that around there. Excellent job and thank you for...
Oh, it's our pleasure. It's our pleasure to help the town. Thank you. Thank you.
Ron?
As always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and your staff, everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Steak and eggs, please.
Okay.
How are ya? Minutes of the previous meeting, resolved at the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen executive session, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen joint special meeting with pension and town council and the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen town council meeting are hereby accepted.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda license applications resolved as a consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation. The same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none? All of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda correspondence resolved as a consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Amplifier and loudspeaker and theatrical performances and shows and exhibitions resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following application. West Warwick Arctic Block Party Committee, Attention Jerry Lee. Dates June twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, rain date June twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Time, two to five PM, location Arctic Gazebo, Sixth Washington Street.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in...
I just have a question on it.
Sure.
Is Jerry here?
Yes, he's there.
Yes, I just saw him here. Somewhere, he was...
Just a quick question, Jerry.
Jerry, just hold that microphone.
Do you, um... Are you... There's, alright, the business owner on here, it says West Warwick Arctic Block Party Committee. Is there, do you have insurance, is, are you a formal group? Or is just a group, I know we've, we've talked...
We're just a group that got put together and processed getting the insurance.
Okay. So...
Wait, the what, what did you say?
Process of getting the insurance.
Okay. So, is this contingent on that then?
You can make a contingent. Do you have any idea when you might get approval?
I mean, I've been trying to get an answer back from one of the companies, but if I can't get an answer tomorrow, if you guys say it's a go, then I'll just go to another company.
We can do a contingent on that, correct? You can do a contingent, but you'd have to have the proof of insurance, I would say, at least. Well, this is June twenty-third.
Yeah, it's a play of time.
Two months prior, April twenty-third? That would be sufficient, huh?
Yeah. It's the only question I have. Because, like, if you're doing this on, on town property, would be at the gazebo, correct?
Correct.
If something were to happen?
No, we know, we're just waiting.
It goes after, they go after you.
Yeah, we've been going for about a month and a half trying to get it.
And to clarify, because we spoke a little bit yesterday, actually me and Jay talked to you as well, you'd be blocking off, similar to what we do for the, for the tree lighting, right? From...
That is correct.
From Bank Street down to, like, the Hong Kong Restaurant and down towards the, uh, right where Legion Way begins, right?
Correct, same as they do for the tree lighting.
Yes, just, uh, amend, amend it to, the vote would be an approval contingent upon proof of insurance to be received no later than, uh... The twenty-third, or you want to say May first?
That's always before the event.
Always before the event.
Yeah.
But it's not something that we have to... Yeah.
Yeah, so what will happen is, um, when you come to the clerk's office, they would show proof of insurance, then she would issue you a permit.
Is there, excuse me, is there a detail needed for this or anything to add to that?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll be actually getting three, uh, three to four officers.
I'm gonna...
That's still approved, then.
I'm gonna make an amendment to approve under the, um... Advice of our solicitor that you'd have the insurance by, um...
May first, is that...
May first makes it easier.
May first.
Gives you time also.
One more question.
Oh, go ahead.
Is anybody from the town, have you spoken with any, any agent from the town, any department from the town about this?
I've talked to the town clerk, if that's what you're talking about.
No, like, um...
Well, I've spoken to Major Levine.
Do you need, do you need DPW to do anything? Whether it's barrels or, or it's, um...
They spoke to Major Levine.
Okay.
So, right?
We did.
Gonna work that out.
We're actually doing a cleanup prior to it and a post-clean-up.
We have volunteers that are gonna be doing the cleanup, so it's not...
But...
Okay.
Alright, I have a, I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have amended. Now we'll discuss it again. Any other questions?
I amended it. No.
Any other questions from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, John.
Good luck, anything you need before the event, let me know.
Town Council acting as the liquor commission. Class B victualling li- liquor license resolved as the following application for a class B limited victualling liquor license having advertised in accordance with law for hearing. On this date, no remonstrance or objectors present. The same is hereby approved. Jonathan Briggs, doing business as JJ's Cafe, two eighty-nine Coeset Avenue, Unit Three, West Warwick, Rhode Island, zero two eight nine three.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion from the council? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations.
Town Council acting as town council. Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash seven. Second reading in ordinance amending chapter twelve-five Parks and Recreation, Article Three, McCarthy Field, Section Twelve-Five dash thirty-four, ground maintenance of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
It's just a second reading, just cleaning up the language to bring it up to, uh... To the use of what we have.
Any public comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, Jack?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash eight. An ordinance amending chapter five Buildings, Article One in General, Chapter Eight Garbage and Trash, Article One in General, Article Five Garbage and Refuge Dumpsters, Article Seven Rules and Regulations for Collection and Disposal of Rubbish, Chapter Fifteen Residential, Commercial, and Industrial Users of the Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility Use Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
I'll move the ordinance, but the tape isn't running. Oh, that's...
I'll second.
Moving secondly, discussion? Again, this is second reading over this last meeting. Language and, um... Ordinance basically, uh, keeping dumpsters enclosed and whatever it may be. Any public comment? Hearing none, Jack?
Yes.
Angelo?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Reports, town managers report.
Yes, I have two items to mention tonight. One is at the last meeting, I mentioned the federal program, Opportunity Zones, that is being initiated by the Department of Treasury and local applications are being submitted through this, the Economic Development Commission. We received, uh, had a few days' notice and I want to commend Mark and Elaine for filing a very good application for that program. It's been sent to the state and hopefully they'll review and approve it and send it up to the Department of Treasury. But, uh, an application was filed and it was very good and I wanted to thank those who, uh, prepared that. The other item I'd like to mention is the, uh... The letter that we received from Chief Barris indicating his intent to retire in July. Thinking about it, uh, you know, Chief is our elder statesman as far as tenure goes for department heads. Ten years, a long time. And the short time that I have known him, I've been very impressed with his abilities, his knowledge of fire operations and especially, we've had a lot of unusual situations or weather-related events. In October, we had the four or five days of power outages. We've had numerous nor'easters and blizzards and part of the chief's role is coordinating all the emergency services. Does an excellent job at that. Always felt comfortable with him in charge of all those items, whether it be opening the shelters when needed, always monitoring, uh, the weather, the, uh... The flood, the, uh, flood stage on the rivers. Certainly was very helpful to me and I appreciate his assistance and certainly his service to the community. He will be a hard person to replace. But nonetheless, uh, you know, we'll start on a process to do that. Working on a schedule. We'll be advertising the, for the position, probably in April, the interviews and make a recommendation to the council so we would have someone in place on or around July first, so. Uh, we'll start on that process, but I did want to recognize the chief for his, uh... Certainly his tenure here and his abilities, uh, that he's performed for the town and my appreciation for the assistance that he's given me personally these short five months.
And yes, I did get that letter last time. And the reason why it wasn't announced was because it was in a confidential envelope. I did let the council get a copy of each letter. Unfortunately, it was online next day anyway. But, um... Again, I've worked, Angelo and I have both worked with Chief Barris for ten years now. You know, we were on the hiring committee, we, we made a good choice way back when, ten years ago. And I gotta say, it's gonna be a loss without you. Hopefully whoever replaces you can come in and hit the floor running. Me personally, I know the chief has recommended that he be on the search committee group. I, I definitely would agree one hundred percent, wholeheartedly, because he knows what the department needs, where it needs to continue moving forward. So, I mean, I think we need to get that advertisement out there now and start looking from that point on.
Yeah, I just want to thank Joe, um, like David said, not to reiterate. We hired Joe. We worked with Joe very closely. Joe knows that we're on the river, we know what it's all about and Joe always came down while it was flooding and asking our opinion because most times it was more, um, precise than our weather reports or our EMA or, um, whatever, national news, but Joe's always been there for us down there, he's very, he was very considerate to all the business down there. He helped any way he could. I called Joe many times and if he didn't have an answer, which was rarely, he got the answer for me immediately. So, Joe, it was an honor and a pleasure to work with you and I wish you and your family all the best. And, uh... Don't forget when you go away, I'm your main man to carry the baggage, so. Good luck, Joe.
Anybody else?
Yes, um, I, I haven't known the chief for that long, just over a year. But he has a vast amount of knowledge about the fire department and the town and I don't know the number offhand, but he's brought in quite a bit of money to the town of West Warwick, which I think gets overlooked.
Over a million.
And, and that's, that's a lot of money. And I think it's gonna be very difficult to replace him and I really don't think that his men appreciate him enough because grass isn't always greener on the other side and he does a hell of a job.
Again, on the lighter side, I want to say that the chief is so full of knowledge that when he calls me, I make sure I allot like at least twenty-five to forty-five minutes for the phone call. Never when I'm running late for a meeting while I call the chief, I'll call him afterwards. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've, I've come to know the chief over the last several years. You know, it's always a pleasure to drive by your house as I drive, drive home. I'm always looking for you to, you know, see your wave and, uh, you've been fantastic. I mean, even during the storms, like, you're always there, you're always available. You know, I don't know if we could find a better chief.
Even away, when he's away on vacation, he answers the phone.
No, even late at night.
Always available.
I remember back in, in June, um, when my father was sick, I was, I was at Foxwoods and I had to call nine-one-one and I called the chief to get an update because I was, it was a long drive to Kent County Hospital and this was like probably at like twelve-thirty at night, he was, I mean, he was available. He called me right back, gave me an update, so. Thank you.
Chief, good luck with your endeavors. Hopefully, uh, we got a couple of months here together until July, so. Thank you for the kind words, yes, it is till July. So, but again, you know, whatever your plans are. Thank you.
So, we got two months of speeches, we can just do this for two months, boy.
Anything else, Ernie? Thank you.
Ward, okay, sorry.
Ward reports. Uh, five?
Couple of quick things. The condo development on Green Bush is moving fairly quickly at this point. The developers, if you've driven by, are moving quick. They have one of the first buildings almost up. If at this point anyone has any questions, they can certainly reach out to me. They can certainly reach out to the planner. For those who are living on Deerfield, who are dealing with the bump in the road, I've spoken to Freddie, we're gonna try to get out there and see what we can do about that. Other than that, it's been very quiet.
Four?
Hold on, um, but, are we getting a text that the video stopped on the...
The video stopped?
Looks like the red light's on, that means it's not on correct.
No, the blue light's on.
So, actually the cameras are facing that.
Yeah, I'll just look it up, man.
It's fine. Sorry, that means the red light's on.
Well, spring hopefully will be upon us very shortly.
Maybe in July.
It's been quite a quiet in Ward Four. I just want to make a note, this will be discussed probably in a few minutes, but, uh, Ward Four will be involved in the Earth Day cleanup this year. So, if any's, if there's anybody out there that's listening or in the audience that wants to take part in that on April fourteenth, then please let me know.
Video's working, Tom's giving us a thumbs up.
I'm looking at that as well.
Another one, yes.
Uh, three?
Ernie, uh, had, if you had an, um, an update on the light pole on Musketi, I know we were supposed to get an update from, uh, because I know it was kinda on the Coventry line. We were trying to get, for those that don't, we were trying to get a light pole up on Musketi. There was a little bit of a problem because I guess the, the wire, the, uh, the line went through Coventry, right?
Right. Still, still working on that issue.
Okay. And then we should have some good news for the people in the Shippee Ave area very soon about that project, the flood project. I want to talk it over with Mark Corullo before I make any kind of announcement, but I feel confident that you'll be having some, uh, some good news for the people in Shippee Ave area. That's all. Um, I'm gonna go last, Angelo, one?
Just a few things. Freddie, uh, I got a call today, we didn't forget that Tanglewood curb where the plows chopped it all up, right? Did you assess that?
I did.
It's a mess. She's all nerfed up, she's an elderly woman, her husband died. And, um... I never get any calls from them, so it's like, whatever you can do as soon as possible. The other problem I have is on Newell Street. I remember six, seven years ago, there's a telephone pole in the middle of a parking lot. I now rent that parking lot and business. And since I've been open for ten weeks, I've had five cars smack the pole. I hit it myself in the last snowstorm and whacked my back of my truck out. I've put in probably seven or eight tires around it. I've had Joe Argenti come down, we called National Grid. They were ready to move it twenty feet. It's a hazard to all the cars, people that come, that road is traveled like you wouldn't believe. And I just wanted to bring it up to the council because now Verizon refuses to move it without the town paying six hundred dollars. That is a problem with customers. There's two businesses in that Plaza. Not because it's me, I fought for it when the Pinger family still owns the property. I fought for it then, I've been working on it for six years and I just want to direct Ernie to verify, I mean, there's been damage. At least once a week, cars are hitting it. It sticks out in the middle of the road, in the middle of the parking lot and if you go around the corner, the pole's leaning this way, so many cars hit it. There's nothing else we can do. I, I wrapped eight tires, Joe Argenti has all the pictures, he's been there. But I mean, National Grid or Verizon, whoever's responsible for this, it's causing a problem for our, for our citizens of this town and it doesn't cause a problem with me except for I banged out the back of my truck, but next time I make sure I bring the loader and I whack it down. But this has to be addressed. Joe Argenti's done everything he had to do. So now I want to put it on record of what's going on and it's our private property, so when you call the police, they don't, you don't, they don't want to report because it's private property and it's stuck three feet on. So if any of you go by there and just look at it, you'll say, who the hell okayed that pole to be there in the first place? But anyway, I just want it on record so we can go forward with the next step. And Ward one's fine and doing well and good luck during the storm and thank you, guys. The DPW did a good job the other day. The last storm with the trees that fell on Tanglewood. I called you, you were right on it. Then in that meantime, I got a email from David where another tree fell on New London and that was cleared up. Thankful to Joe Argenti, he got the power back on as soon as possible because we do have the Westget Manor there. And power was restarted within a couple hours, so. Everybody involved, I thank yous all and, uh, I'm all set with one.
Thank you, Angelo. Alright, so the Orchard, which is the condo association up off of North Pleasant, they just put up this, they put up their second building. So that's four units already and looks like they're going for the third one. One thing I've been working with, I've been working with Krista Hanfield from Thundermist and, uh, for the, um... Equity Health Zone.
Health Equity Zone.
Health Equity Zone. So, what, her and I, she called me the other day about a grant opportunity and she wanted me to bring it before the council tonight and I told her I could. Unfortunately, she has a class next door at Thundermist, so she couldn't be here tonight. If, if things wrap up early, she will get here. What we're proposing is to install, right now, if anybody remembers, there used to be, uh... A play area in Riverpoint Park towards the back, swing sets on the soccer field. At the time, the swing sets became unsafe, so the town took them down, they were never replaced. That's one of the biggest parks where most of the kids are at throughout eight months of the year, at least. So, what we're proposing is to install an all-inclusive fitness play area for children of differing abilities from the ages of five to twelve years old. They'll install a swing set with accessible swings for smaller and larger children, one non-adaptive swing. We will also purchase four to five additional pieces of fitness equipment. The equipment will focus on development of different areas of fitness such as balance, arm strength, wrist, shoulder, dexterity, core strength, et cetera. This space will also increase children's self-esteem and promote social comprehensiveness through inclusion. So she's applying for a ten thousand dollar grant. We would have to, if we do get approved, we would have to fund three thousand dollars. But that, you know, so that's something that, you know, once it's approved, if it does get approved, does the council have any issues with that going in there? New swing set, we may have to, it could be three thousand dollars of in-kind donation, whatever it may be. It's just gonna be three thousand.
Where was that again?
Riverpoint Park. We, you know what the swing set used to be? So they want to do that area over again. What they were looking at was other things like a community garden.
Don't we have any seventeen-twenty-one fees? How much is in there? Did we ever check on that later?
I don't know.
We ought to check on that because that's what that money's...
Well, that's, and I'm saying, that's what it's designed for.
Designed for...
We have, we have all the condos going in and they have to pay those 1721 fees, they should go in that account.
So I mean, that should, that should be for recreation, parks and recreation, that's what it was designated for, so I don't think there's a problem in any of that.
It's needed down at Riverpoint.
Yeah, definitely, I was disappointed when they took it out.
It's one piece that's missing down there, it's one piece that's missing. Is, is the play structure?
Well, yeah, they took it down, I think, five years ago and we just never could put it back in.
And they've done a lot of work.
I'd like to get, Ernie, I'd like to get a, a report on how much money is in our 1721 fees. Please.
When, she, she didn't apply yet, right?
She applied, just being tomorrow.
Do you know when the, she's not gonna get an answer?
She'll get an answer hopefully within a month or two. So I'm hoping that it'll be early spring, early summer.
Well, if the other playground is, the play structure's going up in, yeah, the one that.
Factory Street.
Factory Street, maybe we could utilize the same person that puts that in.
Yeah.
And we could save on that end.
Yep. And that's, I wanted to bring that. My next thing is, and I, I'm really contemplating on doing this, and I would expect any one of you to do it, especially if your integrity was violated or whatever it may be. After last council meeting, unfortunately, you know, Councilman Messier did lose his father that night. Somebody went home, put something on social media, and I responded to that. Maybe I shouldn't, I probably maybe shouldn't have, whatever it may be. It just basically said, another meeting night, another lack of professionalism, please get out and vote Ward three in November. I did respond and I said, are you kidding me? When I heard the news, I called Jay, checking him, on him personally and said, not to come to the meeting, blah, blah, blah. And I, and I basically said, what he may not know is the sister went through a major operation the day before. I don't care about that, I have thick skin, I can live with that, I honestly can. The part that I'm disappointed in is later on, on Facebook, my car was vandalized twice last year after a council meeting that I was vocal at. Coincidence? The building inspector shows up at my door for what he called a fence violation around the pool that was empty and coming down. Nobody called him? I live on a dead-end street. I was told by many politically active people that Goslin was behind it. I now have concrete information on something else he did, but I need to announce that in public because there may be others that affect and I don't want anyone not to hear. So at that point, I sent an email to the town manager, I said, can you confirm why the building official was at this house? Because last year, around June 8th, is when the building official was out there. At that point, that individual blamed it on Councilman Messier sending the building official out to her house. I said to that individual, I don't agree with him because you shouldn't, no councilman should ever, and I, ever, use their ability to make somebody go to somebody's house to cause a hassle. Ironically, on 6/8, I was talking to this person on Facebook and, and saying, I'm sorry if this is true, but I don't think it is. I told him, guaranteed from the building official, that he did not go there on anybody's order. In fact, on June 12th, George, I mean, June 7th, George went out to 30 Carpenter Court to post on the house unsafe, which was across the street. While he noticed the pool on 25 Carpenter Court with no barrier, he left the door hanger on to call the building official. There was no complaint there. Nobody up here called and said, go out to 25 Carpenter Court, not one person. Ironically, what they forget to tell you is, I offered, after all that, because they were on Facebook complaining about it. I offered my Saturday afternoon and said, I will come by there and help you remove that because I feel bad for the individual. I honestly did feel bad for the individual. And at that point, they said, no, somebody's their savior, he works alone, blah, blah, blah. That, I was, still had thick skin, but for me, to, to sit there and say, I'm behind vandalizing cars? Angelo, you know what happened to me in 2008. Every single window got taken out of my car. I know what that feels like, and there's no way in hell I would have anybody go to somebody's house and touch anybody's property. Everybody I know, I work hard for my property, every single person up here works hard for their property, I wouldn't expect it from anybody. Then it goes on and on. I now get blocked, so now I can't even defend myself, and that's why I'm doing this here tonight. It goes on to say that on a Friday night, recently came, became aware of something that is nothing short of abuse of power. And I went to Town Hall in February to validate the facts. On November 28th, there was a town council meeting held where they interviewed two attorneys for judge position. One was Mr. Lambert, and I have his consent to use his name. They did not, they did not attend the meeting because they were busy with the family emergency. I did yell at Mr. Lambert that night and I will not argue that. I also said, you haven't paid tangible taxes in 40 years. I did say that, 30 years actually is what I said. He then continues to tell Ray Lambert that I'm going after him for tangible taxes. Then he gestures to Councilman D'Amico and says, look what happened to him, he only owns a mop and a bucket. That conversation never happened here. My conversation with Mr. Lambert was in that council, the clerk's office, and I said to him, I said, Mr. Lambert, if we make you a judge, you don't think three days after when they find out you haven't paid taxes, that somebody will come here and complain about you? Whether it's that person or somebody else, they'll call us morons, saying, look what we did, we promoted this guy to a judgeship? That's what I said to Mr. Lambert, so that got twisted. December, I go to the meeting where they pick up the judge, Lambert was not chosen, he gets up, goes away, blah, blah, blah. Then, January 2018, this person runs into Mr. Lambert and he's sent a tangible tax form, hand-addressed, hand-labeled by the town. He says hello and proceeds to tell me he is working on it like he was explaining himself to me. I asked him why, he said, because David told him I was the one that would do that to him. I never said that. I never in a million years would go after or report any business owner anywhere for anything. So in February, I had to go to Town Hall for something, and while I was there, I figured, let me go see the tax assessor has to say. I spoke to deputy tax assessor and a tangible tax assessor. I asked, how would an out-of-cycle form be sent out to someone? He explained he would have to be told to be sent, to be sent out. So I furthered the conversation and asked if he could tell me what prompted him to send out one, and he went to his computer and checked and said, lo and behold, the form was ordered by none, no other than Councilman David Goslin, president. Made to look like I did it to Ray Lambert, a man I never met before, knew nothing about. So at that point, I had to send an email and waste more town time. I basically said to the town manager and Sal, who's not here tonight, I want written statements from these two employees, who she spoke to. So I have screenshots here, there's nothing in there that says Dave Goslin ordered this, first of all. I spoke to deputy assessor Anne Kootu. This happened during the week that the town manager and assessor was on vacation in February. After the constituent came into the assessor's office to ask me a few questions about the process, sending out tangible forms, she supposedly went to go see Mark Corullo after this. I haven't checked with him or nor did she, if she did or did not. David Goslin never ordered our office to do anything about, anything concerning assessment procedures. I spoke with our tangible vendor about whether there was an account for law offices at 8 and 1/2 Laramie Street. When informed that there was not, I instructed him, the Sal instructed him to send out a personal property statement. This happened after a council meeting when the judgeship was being discussed on December or January. First of all, when we were interviewing the judges, somebody in this Town Hall called me and said, we don't think Mr., on his resume, it had his, and it was made public, on his resume, he had a business at 8 and 1/2 Laramie Street. We had no record of that business. He stated on his, and I have the utmost respect for Ray, I, I talked to him numerous times as a person. You know, he might not be talking to me today, but I still respect him. Then it went on, as Ernie asked, did Anne speak to the citizen about this? And, and I just gave you her answers. Now, Sal, yes, she did. When the constituent came in, Anne was in the office. She asked for the assessor and was informed he was away for the week. She, the taxpayer, started asking general leading questions on our personal property procedures without asking a specific account. Tony Vecchio was in the, in the office also at time, he answered a few of her questions. Unfortunately, Tony's on vacation this week, so I can't get his answers. The way questions were being asked led Anne to believe that this was Mr. Lambert, Anne advised Mark about this after she left the office. Sal, can you call Tony? Tony's away until the 26th. Anne does not recall whether the council president's name was mentioned specifically in that office. The taxpayers seemed to be agitated, in roundabout ways, she seemed to be alluding to the president. I spoke to Sal, he asked if there was any tangible account for law office 8 and 1/2 Laramie. And yes, Mr. Lambert did get sent one, but it was because of the interview he went through, not because Dave Goslin sent it. And just for the record, Mr. Lambert's taxes are now $14.82. So if I made a major discovery there, God forbid. And the mop bucket comment was never made except for me talking to Mr. Lambert privately there. What I'm, what I just am totally sick of is, and I, and I, and I did, on this face, on, on my page, my personal page, I did call this person a liar and a manipulator. And a lot of these facts, yeah, she ran in the office, yeah, but nobody ever said Dave Goslin did this. And I can tell you right now, Dave Goslin has sent anybody down the damage of cars. You put on Facebook that you had six car accidents. Maybe the damages from those six car accidents in the past five or 10 years, however old your car is. But Dave Goslin didn't do it, and Dave Goslin didn't send anybody to your house. That's all I want, I, I'm just agitated with it.
But again, again, it's Facebook and we play the games, no matter if it's this individual or whatever individual, or any other individual. We said from the beginning, you play with that fire, you're, we're all gonna get burnt. And we are getting burnt, and you know what? They probably can say whatever they want, maybe they were told something, I don't know what happened, I really don't care what happened. Because I've had comments about myself or whatever, because everybody that knows me knows. Don't worry about John telling you I said this about you because I'll come right, anybody who knows me all my life, not just for a couple of years, will know that if I have something, if Angelo Padula has something to say about me, he's coming to my face. Because like I always say, you don't sign my paychecks, you can't fire me, and at 62 years old, you'd have a tough time beating me up. So I have nothing to lose, I have nothing to hide, but this is all propaganda, it's all he said, she said. And if you get everybody in the room together and who lies, who doesn't lie? Who has something against me or David and says something about them behind our backs is gonna deny it in front of us. So, you know, I put this much in Facebook, this much where it started social media, and we all know how that started and we won the council president. Two years ago, a year ago, what's gonna happen, and sure as shit, it's biting everybody in the ass. So I have no sympathy on anyone who gets hammered on that, I got hammered enough, I'm a big boy, I can handle it. And whoever says this one said this and that one said that, come see me, you know where I am, I'm in three different places, three different times, I'd be happy to talk to anybody. And the council president should be saying the same and anybody else on his council. We represent the taxpayers of this town and I'm gonna end it at that because I don't like the bullshit that's going on, I don't like comments that are made. I don't like people getting hammered when they come before this council. I don't like the way some department heads talk to constituents, they pay your salaries. And if I hear one of yous talking to them like that, even though I only got one vote, there'll be hell to pay. And it's not only with some people in this building, it's other buildings also. Police, fire, and school department and everything else included. So I'll end my piece at that.
And again, I, I, I agree with you, Angelo, I usually have thick skin and ignore this to no end, okay? But when somebody's accusing me of damaging their personal property, that's, that's criminal.
I didn't hear any of that, I don't even wanna hear that.
It's in writing, it's, it's criminal. And whoever the political insiders are, and unfortunately, I can't ask for the, I, I've asked the chief for the police reports for these damages. And unfortunately, it's not public information, so he can't share that with me, and, which I understand totally. So whether or not there was a police report filed, I don't even know. But again, when I'm getting nasty emails and basically laughing in my face saying that they are individuals that are protected being slandered or whatever it may be, but I'm not. And they can sue me, but I can't sue them because I'm an elected official, that's, that's a, that's a joke in my eyes and it just needs to stop, it really does.
There is.
I'll end it here tonight, but it needs to stop.
There is a law that anybody can say whatever they want to any public official.
It's a shame.
But there's a, there's a line that you can cross and so far, evidence borderline. I'm not talking about David. Anything that they, you accuse a public official of doing and it's criminal, if you can't prove it, then you have that lawsuit against you. So you cannot say what you wanna say about a public official. If you're, if you're accusing them of a crime, if you're accusing them of taking bribes, if you're accusing them of putting money in their pocket, you're out of bounds. You, you, you cannot say that and you will have a lawsuit. And I'm gonna end it at that with some comments, and I'm talking about myself, not anyone else on this council, because they should be big boys and say what they have to say themselves. But election time's coming and the crap's gonna start, I say, probably after June when everybody sees where everyone's playing or running or running for their lives, whatever they gotta do. But it's a free country and I welcome anyone who challenges any one of us and I'll have my supporters, they'll have their supporters and we'll see how the cards lie.
Jay?
My, take it or leave it, my advice, I, I've said it to you many times, is don't feed into it, don't feed into the banter. You know, I think, I like to think I, I do a, a good job of that, it's tough to hear sometimes negative things about yourself, especially when people don't, don't always know the whole story. I think Councilman D'Amico does a good job of that as well, it's, it's just, it's hard to hear, but if anybody has anything negative to say about me or whatever it is, call me, email me. And I'd be happy to have a conversation and, because there's usually more to the story than what goes on. So, but I, I won't get into the, the banter, and I have, I have twice, and, and I've regretted it each time because it turned into this big hornet's nest.
And that's, and that's what happens, it's like we go on and we often try to put something out there that will have some type of positive impact or it's a piece of information and all of a sudden that thread turns into something totally different. And at that point, you know, you throw up your hands and you're like, forget it, why bother, call me.
Again, I, I normally would not bring this up, but when I'm getting accused of criminal activity, I will defend my integrity up here. And I would, I'd tell you right now.
I agree, you should.
If the situation was for any one of you, and I made it clear, that I would do that for any one of you. And I don't care whether we agree or disagree, nobody should be attacked the way they're being attacked.
I agree. Well, it all started, I mean, just to go backwards a little bit, it started with the last election, it was just, I don't even know what to say. It is more than dirty. It, it was absolutely wrong, it had, I don't think it had anything to do with politics at all, it's just people trying to smear one another and again, it's.
Phony, phony news.
It was awful.
Listen, when it comes, when it comes to election time, I've been in six of them, you all know what happens. You're new, this is your first election, you're new.
I was, I was fortunate, mine, me and Ed was probably one of the cleanest elections I've seen this town in years, so it can be done that way.
And I've said it numerous times, Angelo, you go through the worst elections every single time the cycle comes around.
Especially the one where they filed a false document from family court that I had a gun in Penny's mouth and my son was there. The document, you know, I mean, that's borderline stuff, but this is what they go through and.
When it comes, when it comes to elections.
The people, the caliber of people that run against me. So I'm still here, then I'm back this year, let's see what else you got.
Again, all's I'm saying is when it comes to election time, you never know, it all depends on the person you're running against. And if it comes to smear campaign, you have to protect yourself. And, and they, unfortunately, I've seen some smear campaigns, I've had one, Angelo's had numerous. It's, it's, to me, soon as the candidate's come out, I, whoever it is, I introduce myself to them, good luck, have fun. You know, and however they play, that's up to them. But that's, that's politics, and I, and I still say this and I respect this man to this day, Ward four Councilman Leo Constantino. I was in his house as a young cable guy in 2005, working on his cable, and he knew I was running against one of his good friends. And his one quote, and it's stuck with me for the last 12 years, is, Dave, from here to November, it's politics. From November on, it's policy, whatever happens, I'll be willing to work with you. So that has always stuck with me.
Can you remember, he's the one that started that sunshine, what was it?
He had his own, he had his own.
He had his own Facebook.
It wasn't a Facebook.
He started it and he was the biggest culprit by taking town vehicles home and making snow. So having sailboats in the road, so.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not badgering him, I'm saying.
I'm not badgering him, I mean, I like the guy, I talk to him now.
He's a great guy.
You know, he came by my salvage out a lot of times, he was on the camera, I called him up that Sunday, he looks good, don't it? You know, but I mean, you know, don't throw stones when you live in the glass house, so.
All right, I'm all done with my Ward report, sorry it took so long.
Discussion Action, the Little Free Library at West Warwick Civic Center presentation by Lori Swanson, sponsored by Councilman LaChardy.
I, I'd like to bring, here she comes. This is, I, I read the program, I think it's an excellent program, I'm not gonna steal Lori's thunder with this. She's been working on this, so she will be giving you a report.
That's not a camera, right?
Yeah, I see Mayor Lozier in the middle.
All right, I'll make this really, really quick. This is a project that's been going on for almost a year, I've been working with Tara Warner, she's the president of the Rotary Club. We started it back when Fred. We started it back when Fred was the town manager, you know, things just move really, really slow. The Little Free Library is going to, all the material and whatnot is gonna be purchased by the Rotary Club. We aren't the only town that is getting one, Coventry and West Grimwich are also getting one of these Little Free Libraries. The union is going to put it in, it's going to go in between the fieldhouse and the ice rink. Where I put it, if you look on the second page, you can see it. It's not a great picture, but it's right outside the big window where my office is, and there's a little bench there. They're really, really cute. The installation is gonna take place in April. Then there's a press release that's going out the first week of April. The Rotary Club has asked if any of you have anyone else that you would like to invite, just to get the... their addresses, their emails, their phone numbers over to me. This is a big deal for them, so they're actually making a big deal out of it. The ribbon cutting is going to take place on the twenty-eighth of April from ten to eleven. I will send you all invitations so that you can all be there. Tara is gonna speak, I'm going to go to the school department. I do have someone in mind who I would like to speak from the school department, who does a lot of the reading specialists, and you know, just how this is such a great impact on the town. You know, basically, it's, anyone can take a book, leave a book. They're gonna maintain it twice a month, obviously, I'm there all the time. I'm going to look to make sure that there's nothing inappropriate in this little box. And, you know, I mean, it is under the camera, so we, you know, hopefully, we don't have to worry about anyone vandalizing it and whatnot. I did give you all just a little bit of history, just so that you understand, like, you know, this is actually really, really big, it took off, and you know, everyone is trying to put them in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, we have one right in my house on Orange Street, right at Robinson Way.
Yeah, and I mean, being near the middle school, and you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on where there's other kids that are just sitting there, because their brothers or their sisters are either playing hockey, they're ice skating, there's basketball, there's soccer, whatnot, they can go out there, they can read a book. So, I mean, I do think that it's gonna be a really good impact for the town, you know, just to help along with the reading, and you know, it's a nice little place to put it up there. I don't got anything else for it.
It's a great idea.
Any questions for Lori?
And if any of you would like to speak, just let me know, and you know, we can put it all in there. There's also a reception afterwards that-
What's the date again?
Excuse me?
You'll email us, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll email you this, everything, and um... You know, there's like a little reception that takes place that same day, it's at the West Grimwich Library, that, you know, I would hope that all of you will come to, as well as myself, so...
Can you tell me what the time, the time again?
The ribbon cutting is ten to eleven.
Ten to eleven, all right, that's my thing.
Yep, and then the reception is two to three. Just because we're the first one, and then they're gonna go off to Coventry, and then to West Grimwich, and then everybody-
On the same day?
Yep, on the same day. So, even if it rains, I'm gonna call all my friends that have little pop-up tents and put them up.
Tents, too.
Yep. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Earth Day Cleanup, April fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Um, I talked to Barbara Tabak today, I'm gonna ask that we table this conversation for the next meeting, she was, uh-
I'll second to table.
Well, it's really not to table, just don't table.
Yeah, just don't take any action.
I just wanna, I'll say one thing, that next Wednesday, there was supposed to be an informational meeting about the Earth Day Cleanup tomorrow, because of the weather, it got pushed back a week. So, it's gonna be next Wednesday, is it at the Senior Center, John?
Yes.
At five o'clock, if anybody's interested in taking, you can just show up on the fourteenth to clean, but if you wanna maybe bring a group together and get some more information, you can show up at the Senior Center, five o'clock next week, and we'll talk about it more at the next meeting. Thanks.
Upcoming appointments, Planning Board, one alternate member for a five-year term, Technology Committee, one opening with a term to expire, twelve thirty-one eighteen. Sewer Use Tax Board of Review, one alternate member with a term to expire, ten twenty-twenty-one. Pension Board, two, term to expire, eleven eighteen twenty-one. Board of Assessment and Review, one with a term to expire, three nineteen. West Warwick Public Library Trustees, one, term to expire, two twenty-twenty-one. Board of Tenant Affairs, one to expire, three eighteen. Public, one to expire, four eighteen. Public, one to expire, four eighteen. Clyde Towers, one to expire, four eighteen. West Warwick Manor. Public comment?
Anybody from the council? I have two quick things. Uh, Reading Week. Uh, Chief Barris, Major McGarra, I mean, uh, Major McGarra, Major Knox, Fred Gill, I've, Horgan School, a teacher from Horgan School, is gonna be reaching out to us, asking, and members of the council, to be, uh, participate in Reading Week at, uh, Horgan School, so if anybody's interested.
Is it just Horgan's doing it?
Um, I think it's everybody, but... I just told her, she works at Horgan, so-
Is there a certain day that we, I know it's the first, the second week of April, correct?
Yeah, normally, you'll get one from Green Bush or whoever, every once in a while, but they would like to see, last year, they don't have too much participation down at Horgan, they did it Green Bush in Wakefield, so they're looking for a little more public participation down there. Going back to Earth Day, a little different. Stan Britson, he's on the Patuxa River Authority, had sent me an email a couple of weeks back, and I thought this was coinciding, but it's actually a week difference. April twenty-first, from eight to noon, they're looking to, and I don't know if anybody's seen the Outer Banks of River Point Park, there's actually a nice walking path slash bike path back there. A few weeks ago, Patuxa River Authority was working with the DPW, going down the Patuxa River, cleaning the banks on the boats, you know, I guess they couldn't wait till the spring, they wanted to do it in nice cold weather. But, uh, they, 'cause, well, not only that, the growth isn't there, and they're able to get there. So, but, when he saw the bankment of River Point Park, the Patuxa River Authority reached out and said, "We're gonna have a cleanup day for that, and they're gonna bring some high school students, and who need to make extra credit and whatever else." So, he's invited the council and myself to that, and any other volunteer that wants to come down. April twenty-first, rain date, April twenty-second. Eight to twelve.
I went to the Patuxa River Authority meeting a few weeks ago, and I spoke with the whole group, but it's, they've already went down, it's an absolute mess. They're saying it's gonna take a lot to clean it up. It's not just trash, it's fallen trees, and they get dirty, they get in there.
But we have another group too, a BISO group that also participates in helping clean that up, they use that once, a few times a year over there, where they're running mountain bike events, and they're using that facility. So they come in usually early spring also, because they have a container down at River Point, and they, with the town, try to go and clean up that path all the time. So hopefully, with everybody's help, that'd be great again. Public comment, anybody from the public? Mr. Gadro?
Bert Malahan, Monterey Drive, Mr. President. That damn Facebook causes more trouble than Carter has little liver pills. I'm so glad that I grew up in the tail end of the World War II generation, and I go by it today, sticks and stones may break my bones, but names will never hurt me. And I still abide by that to this day. And if I give you my word, and I give you a handshake, believe me, that's the gospel truth, and I never go behind it. But I wanna point out another example of what happened to Angelo. We had a case like that at the Canvas Board. They tried to stop Angelo from running as a councilman. And, oh Christ, they had all kinds of things that he did when he was young and foolish, like we all, like most men do when they're young and foolish. We all had experiences with that. And I wouldn't want anybody to know what I did when I was eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Ask me, Bert, I'll tell ya, I don't need them to tell ya.
And I told the audience at that time, I said, "Let the voters decide." And the voters decided, and he got back in. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Bert.
That's why I couldn't find, I tried to add him on Facebook recently, that's why I couldn't find him.
Hey, buddy.
Well, gentlemen, welcome to the world of-
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Gadro, Twenty-Two Shippey Avenue. Welcome to the world of He Said, She Said. But I take offense to your use, as an elected official, of your personal tirade here this evening. If you feel you're being lied about, about criminal activity, then you have a suit. You have issue.
Mr. Gadro, I'm not a suit-happy person, I don't-
I'm not a suit-happy person, or I would've filed a suit-
I'm saying I'm not.
I'm not, I would've filed a suit at my first incident with this town, police department. Okay, what you did tonight was uncalled for. If you want to publicly say something about someone offending you on Facebook, and because you were blocked, you came here to this council meeting. Sir, let me speak. If you wanna answer me, please let me speak. I've given you my cards before, that I had the brain injury, I have Parkinson's seizures, and if I'm interrupted, I lose my train of thought. Have I not?
Yes, you have.
So I'm asking for some courtesy. We listened while you took your official position as town council president and lashed out personally, because someone made a statement about you. If they cross that line, that is something you need to address legally. If not, then don't bring it up here as public discussion, unless you wanna step down off of that stand and come in here as a citizen.
So what you're saying, Mr. Gadro?
I understand you being upset.
So, if somebody is talking about your integrity, you don't think anybody has a right to dispute?
I-
You're an elected official, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. You don't think if, any elected official, not Dave Goslin, any elected official-
I do not-
-being... Saying that they're doing criminal acts, you don't think they have the right to defend themselves up here? You don't?
I'm saying they have the right, but if they cross-
Go ahead.
But, you said, and Angelo said, if they cross the line, you're saying, you're being accused. I haven't seen the writing, I don't know the other individual involved. You used your official capacity to attack someone who attacked you on Facebook. And it is Facebook. Okay? All right, you corrected my error when I made a mistake as far as what the town police department went over on Facebook, when I made a statement on the amount of money the town police department used on overtime.
Did I attack you here, Mr. Gadro?
No, I'm not saying, but I'm saying you addressed me. I made a mistake, I accepted the mistake. Okay? And if you hadn't brought up the thing on Facebook here tonight, I wouldn't be up here saying anything about that. Okay? I've had issues since I moved in this town. I moved in in two thousand thirteen, end of two thousand fourteen, I had a seizure, I couldn't talk, and I had an officer who wouldn't let me speak, because I couldn't answer his questions fast enough. And dismissed me. When I went to file a complaint, I was told to get out, they weren't gonna, they weren't going to take my complaint, which is a violation of state law, which says the complaints are to be taken and investigated by Internal Affairs. And I had to press and keep pressing in order to get that complaint taken. Once it was addressed, through proper channels, and I got a letter of apology from the then-chief. That was it. And then a year and a half later, I was assaulted during a wellness check, and physically injured, and I have two witnesses to that. And yes, I am suing the town. And I have come here because I have issued, had issues with the police department, and thank you for correcting them and putting up the orange chain link. But when an elected official, working in his capacity as the town council president, makes the statements that you made tonight, it's uncalled for. You just abused your authority.
Okay. So, Mr. Gadro, let's start fresh here tonight. Okay? I'll never use that authority again. You stop flipping off the police department and fight off that.
They flipped me off, they flipped me off when I am going in my wheelchair. And I have a constitutional right upheld by the Fourth District Court.
Mr. Gadro, I don't wanna fight with you.
You just asked me to, no.
Let's start fresh, let's start fresh here tonight. Respect the men and women of our departments. They'll respect you, and I expect them to respect you.
And they have it.
But listen, Mr. Gadro, I'm asking you here tonight to, let's start fresh. Don't flip them off, don't call them-
Tell them to stop following me.
And if they are flipping you off, we need to know that.
Cameras.
And I have told you that before. That's why I now carry a body cam.
Well, when you-
I have dash cams in all my vehicles, I have surveillance cameras at my house. They came to my house in the middle of the night for no reason, because someone got dropped off drunk, and we're gonna check on them. They've come to my house in the early morning, no.
There's no need to get upset.
In the middle, in the early morning, wanting to know who lived in my house. All right? Now, I have a constitutional right to flip them off. I have a constitutional right to swear at them, and it's been upheld by the Fourth District Court, federal Fourth District Court, and the US Supreme Court. All right? I went in, I asked the police nicely not to park the cars. When I went in and I said, "I wanna talk to them about the idiots", I was yelled at and told to get the hell out. And that's the nice word that was used. When I had the issue in November, my cane, my registration were taken out of my car. When I went in, they told me they wouldn't take the complaint. When I fought with them, "Okay, we'll make a notation", I'd like a copy, no, you don't get a copy. So yes, I have issues with this police department. When I drive down the road and I haven't done anything, I don't need to be followed. I don't need to be stopped when I take a left-hand turn from a left-hand turn-only lane. The law says you will use a mechanical means, hand signals, or another process to signal. I'm in a left-hand turn-only lane, the only thing I can do is take a left-hand turn. If you'd like to make comments, I have a Facebook, West Warwick Community Safety Ordinance. I'm in discussion with the Community Safety Ordinance of Providence, the ACLU, and others, trying to push that. I was going to talk to Jason Messier, he's had health problems, family problems, so I haven't moved towards him to address that. When you have your offices, leave me the hell alone. I won't flip them off. They flipped me off my- Yes, I drive around with a banner on my car and my truck, asking for a West Warwick Community Safety Ordinance. Those signs were pulled off my truck that day in November. They were paper, so now I have banners. I'm not a person, when you push me, I push back. I tried talking to the chief, I've tried talking to this council, and that hasn't helped.
Mr. Gadro, I tend to disagree with you, because every time you've come up here, we've been very quadgeled to you. We've tried to fix every problem, including the chains, including the stop sign, the no right-hand turn on red. You had a situation over there, that got resolved.
When?
When the, you almost got hit over there by an individual, and you did get very vulgar towards the lady, and you had the-
I told, she kept, I, the police weren't, no, wait, I-
Hold on, hold on.
Look, okay.
We accommodated that, we got the state to come in, put no turn on red for you. We've got the chains put there, the cars are not going over the sidewalk.
Right.
So, we've been, now, other situations, you've handed me lawsuits, and I, you've handed me paperwork, and I brought it to the chief, I brought it to the major. I said, "What is this?" Well, there's no court case or anything on it.
There's no court case, that is what, because, no.
Wait a minute, Mr. Gadro, I'm not gonna act on something that's not legit paperwork.
No.
So, wait a minute. But we have always accommodated everything that you've asked us to do, and I'm asking you to do one thing today, one thing.
And what I'm trying to say-
And I think it goes a long way.
The paperwork that I handed you is a pending action, sent to the police chief, sent to Major Knox, waiting for a response from him. And because I've had to, had continued issues with the police stopping me for no reason, and everything else, we're still waiting for the police department for a response. and everything else, we're still waiting for the police department for a response. And now it's been almost a year since the lawyer has contacted them. So, it's not a piece of junk put together, it was already presented to the town, to the previous town manager, the previous police chief, this police chief, and Major Knox, we're still waiting for a response. They requested additional documentation. That documentation was given to them, we're still awaiting response. So, did you know that?
Like I said, the document that I had in front of me-
Right, had no court case, because before you file a court case, you send, and you try to work something out with the department and the town, or the plaintiff, I mean, I'm, my being the plaintiff, the defendant.
With the court, with the court header?
That-
I've never seen that before.
That-
So, when it has Rhode Island State Court on it, and it has their header, like, somebody stamped and printed out their paperwork, and there's no court case on it, and you present that to us as it looks like it's a court case, that's illegal?
Yes, it is, because there's no number on it. This is a pending action. Am I correct?
I have-
A pending action, you can send it?
No, it's not an action.
It's a pending action.
No, sir, it's a complaint that you filed with the police department, that's all.
The complaint was filed with the poli-, this police department, when you go in to make a complaint, they tell you to get, they tell you to get out.
Sir, 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 it's a complaint, it's not an action, it's not a lawsuit, it's not a case, it's not litigation, it's got nothing to do with the court.
Okay, no. You're, you're taking a very narrow view of the word "action." It's some, action is something I'm doing or working on, my attorney is working on. All right? You're trying, you're doing a, a legal, you're using a narrow legal definition-
Sir, 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 the document that you filed with the police department is your complaint, correct?
The complaint was initially filed with the police department. I waited five months for them to respond, before I went to a lawyer. Then I went to a lawyer. That's what's been drawn up, there is a mistake there, and then I'll meet with you after this, I'll give you my lawyer's name and number, I'll give him yours, I'll ask him, I'll ask Kevin or Jay to contact you.
Sure.
All right? I'm vocal, I'm loud, I'm hard of hearing, so I apologize for that. Yes, you have addressed issues with the chain. The woman that almost hit me, I was crossing the street in my wheelchair, I relieved myself in my pants because she hit me, nearly tipped me over. I had to put my leg out to stop that. And she kept going, saying how she wasn't that kind of person. And, and I said that she was a B-I-T-C-H, using that definition of that word as an uppity woman, 'cause I'm old, which was maude on TV, M-A-U-D-E, a TV show. And she was an uppity woman, and she was a B.
So, listen, Mr. Gadro, like I said, a new beginning here tonight.
Will your officers stop following me? I drive into town, I-
Listen, a new beginning here tonight.
I'm-
That's all I'm asking.
I'm asking you, when I drive into town, I don't wanna be picked up at the edge of town and followed around. When they've, I've come in and to go home, so to make sure, all right, I drive all over, and they're putting miles on our police cars just to follow me around and harass me. And I am going forward with everything I can for the West Warwick Community Action of Safety Ordinance.
Thank you.
Angelo, as I say, you're about the only voice of reason here.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that.
Uh, I'll talk to you after. I was, Mike, remember Russell Perry?
Yes.
That's my cousin.
Oh, small world.
We can shoot some rays over the old-
Good old Russell.
Yeah.
Daughter was gonna be early.
Almost. It was really, yeah.
Good evening, Councilman, Pika Trail, Westwood Street.
It hooks up on top.
You're getting so tall, Pete.
Kev, show them how to do it.
Man, I'm not getting too much, right?
Exactly. Also, you guys are aware of, um, Mr. Rogerson, the, the war vet that I wrote letters to and, and so forth. There's one person that I didn't get to thank, and that's the chief. Chief Barris, uh, worked with me, I was more or less the paper on it. Um, Chief Barris approached me after the, the first council meeting about the Harrows Flight. And without Chief Barris's help, this wouldn't have ever happened. I just wanna let, let you guys know that Mr. Rogerson is going to Washington. He's going on May seventh, part of the Harrows Flight.
Beautiful.
He's gonna take part of a huge, 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 huge day for him. And, um, the family told him, finally told him, he went to his prelimin-, uh, preliminary flight, I guess we'll call it a check. She's been to the meetings and all of that, and he's excited to go, and I just wanna thank publicly Chief Barris for your help, because without you, it wouldn't have happened. Thank you, Laurie.
And Pete, he's gonna have a hell of a time, because Joe Barris was the main reason why my father went one time, and it was a experience and a half, and they deserve everything they got.
The chief's made a lot of phone calls, I, I know that.
Yeah.
The chief's given me paperwork, I was the runner, you know, between the family, and, uh, I think it's May, May seventh.
April seventh.
April seventh. He'll be leaving at five o'clock in the morning, if anybody wants to be at Green Airport at five. I know, I know myself, hey, like, I, I like to sleep, I'll be there, I know Chief Barris said that he'd like to be there, so I'm inviting the council, if you're up at that hour.
Can you send us a reminder on that?
Sure. You got the Ali's Donuts?
Not at five in the morning.
Thank you.
It's a long haul.
Jay, I'll get you, I got one thing we can talk about.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Pete.
Aaron Isaac, fourteen twenty-seven Main Street. Just two things, really quick. Uh, first off about the Facebook, uh, thing, believe me, every person my age knows your pain, so, uh, I will tell you what every adult seems to tell them, uh, just try to ignore it. I know, I know.
I know.
I, I know, I know, and I sympathize, trust me, I, there's not a day that goes by that one of my friends doesn't call me on the phone, "Can you believe what she said about me?", and then blah, blah, blah. So, yeah.
Say anything, say anything you want about me, I, I don't care, I really don't. Don't accuse me of criminal acts, that's the only thing I care about.
I got, trust me, with, with my generation, it, it doesn't get better. So, uh, the other thing, uh, I was trying to, I didn't know who to go to with this, so, please, anyone. Uh, I was trying to look over the budgets for the town, and I didn't really have a problem, everything's organized very nicely, uh, until, uh, two thousand, I think, thirteen, two thousand twelve maybe, because I guess when the two thousand twelve budget, uh, ends and the two thousand thirteen begins on a different PDF link or whatever you use, uh, the budget doesn't, uh, seem to stay the same. I don't know what exactly happened, but when I try to get the revenues and the, uh, expenses, the numbers kinda converge, whereas, so essentially you're always running the perfect budget, which, congratulations, uh, but, uh, after two thousand thirteen, uh, when I try to compare numbers between years, for example, my mon-, numbers get wonky. So, for example, uh, one year you'll be running, I don't know, seventy million in expenses or whatever, the next year you're running forty million, because the financial year doesn't end, uh, in the indicated, yeah, I, I don't know exactly-
So, right now, like, we're working the budget for this, for next year?
Yeah, yeah, but, but I'm-
We've got it last night.
Well, well, I'm, okay.
Well, what you see right now in the budget is up to January thirty-first, because-
For, now, we're talking two thousand nine-
Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, okay.
So, when you're looking at the lines twelve and thirteen online, obviously that's where you're looking at it, right? Or do you, or do you print it up and look at it? Are you looking at, are you downloading a PDF, uh, Excel file, or are you printing up the Excel file?
I, I mean, I do both, but-
So, what, what I would do is get with Kristen here, and, and she can probably answer that a little better for you.
Okay.
And, and what, what's happening?
Okay. Well, it just looks like, uh, at some point after two thousand twelve, instead of compiling the final expenses and revenues, at some point, that financial year gets cut off, so instead of going through the entire financial year, it gets a, like a snap top, snapshot in time, and I'm trying, and that's not the big issue, the big issue is I don't know where to find the actual, like, data.
Aaron, we can't answer you, because we don't-
Exactly, I didn't know where to go.
Talk to, talk to Kristen, she can get you, yeah, Kristen can get you a copy of that.
She can, she can get you a copy and you can clarify it with her, because asking us is like, you know, numbers we're going through every day, I don't remember what happened yesterday, never mind two thousand and twelve.
And I recommend, I recommend showing up, it's Tu- Tuesday, right? Tuesday's the next-
Yeah, right. You wanna get, learn more about it, come at our budget.
Come sit, you can watch, even if you're just observing and learning, if you wanna come up and speak then as well, that's the time to do it.
Yeah, I think you had one, like, maybe yesterday.
Correct, yep.
I wanted to go to that, I was busy, sorry. But, thanks for your help. All the best with the snow, guys.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.